All right, we'll call the regular meeting of February 15th, 2022 to order. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sean Douglas?
Here.
Michelle Hayes?
Here.
Brian Horvath?
Here.
Gene Sensi?
Here.
Jeff Thompson?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2022 organizational meeting?
I'll move.
I second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Michelle Hayes?
Abstain.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Abstain.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Vote is 3-0-2.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2022 regular meeting?
I'll move.
I second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Abstain.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Abstain.
Vote is 3-0-2.
All right, we'll now have the first public participation portion, or the public participation portion for the evening. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board, and our only speaker tonight is Jessica Lambman.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
I don't really come to you with a whole lot of concerns or anything. Again, thank you for continuing to allow us to choose between putting masks on the kids or not. I like to see your faces at this meeting. This is kind of nice. I know you've done some other meetings too, but this is like the closest I've been, so this is nice. We've, the community and our little organization, the Madison Matters thing, it's created a lot of, not just us, but there is a lot of tension within the community. And it's basically, in my personal opinion and the opinion of a couple others, unclear facts. And we always talk about transparency and stuff. Well, you're providing about as much transparency as you can get right now as a board. I see that. Does everyone see that? No. What I do want, well, I'm not, I don't want you to do it, but just think about, when you want to sell something, you market it. You market the crap out of it. You tell everybody how great it is, why it's great, you show why it's great. When I first came to Madison with my family, COVID first hit, and I was getting Angela's emails, and "We're still staying in school, we're still staying in school." And I'm like, this lady is sweet. Like, everyone else is locking their doors and shutting down shop and doing all this crazy mandate rule, but that's not the case with Angela. She was boom, boom, boom. And I was like, this is nice. I've heard nothing but great things about the community. Look at how she's handling the situation. I was like, like, this is awesome. I remember back then sharing my statuses, saying like how great this school district is, look at what they're doing. You guys are shutting down, doing your thing, not over here. I want, I would love to see our board marketed as, look at what our Board of Education is doing for our district. Look at all the great things. That's why I reached out and asked about all the positive things you've done, not because I want to be nosey and nitpick and everything else, it's because I really would like to try to market the great things that our district has to offer. One of the things is sports. Like, I didn't realize it until my son was got involved, but you guys have some of the best coaches around here, whether it's football, basketball, wrestling. Something that is a little sad is, I've been involved this entire wrestling season with no background check on file with you guys. I went to the Board of Education twice, left my phone number because there's no one there. I would think, like if I'm helping Coach Fortuna and I'm volunteering, like you guys would want to know if I got anything on my background. So I printed one out, just in case, because I just had another one done. I get them done every two years. That's a little concerning though for me, because, you know, we got to kind of run a tight ship. But I would like to see you guys do that, as far as, not transparency, but more so as, hey, Mike the Treasurer, here, this is, this is, yeah, he looks great on paper, and he's quiet usually during our meetings, and he says a lot of numbers and stuff that we don't understand, but maybe host a community meeting and say, look, I know everyone's worried about the numbers and the taxes, so host a community, like a donut event or something, I don't know, just something to kind of like unify and tighten that community knit right now. Because that's, that's ultimately what I'd like to see happen. I don't, I don't like the whole distrust of an entire community, not an entire community, but a large group of people who don't trust our government, which is you guys, is going to create not great things. So, a large group that asks questions and wants clarification, that's great. I still would like to see some large fundraisers with you guys, like the Board of Education, not like, hey, we're going to sell pizzas, hey, we're going to raffle off some of this. Like, you guys come together and figure something out, like all of the staff together, just showing that you're, you're coming together and working together to do that would be huge. Out of all the sporting events, I haven't really seen board members attend that, and if you're in charge of making all these decisions for our whole district, I would think that the most important people in our school district, which is you guys, be there. Man, like if we're going to decide to allocate some funds to buy some new basketball equipment, well, our Board of Education should definitely know whether or not it really needs, not, not just by someone telling you, hey, we need some new stuff. No, like see it for yourself. So coming to these events, coming and interacting with all that is huge. That would be enormous, fantastic. There's no one else to speak?
No, but I'll, I'll give you another minute. You're about at five minutes and 16 seconds.
All right. I've been volunteering with Coach Fortuna.
Well, I want to clarify that, though. Coach Fortuna is youth wrestling in a separate league, so we are not in charge of the background checks. So I do want to clarify that. If you were going to volunteer-
That's great.
-through Mr. Tomaso, then we would be in charge of those background checks, and they do do those.
Which, which is, right.
I just wanted to clarify that.
But the fact that I'm in and out of that high school three to four times a week, you know, do you require it? No. But I think that might be something you look into.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree.
And I'm not trying to be like, like, you know, overpowering, but, or making it harder for parents to volunteer. That's not the goal. The goal is to just make sure we got the right people when they walk into those school doors.
No, and we do require volunteers through the district to be background checked, so, but I think you're bringing up a valid point.
Right, and when you say youth league, I just want to make sure that people that are watching this understand that's a community league, that's not a school league.
Right, the school just lets, allows us to practice and do some turnbacks.
Do they rent the space from us, Angela?
They fill out the building use, but because they're using it during school time, they don't have to rent.
But they do have to still fill out the form?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I want to let you guys know, I guess everyone from Madison knows Fortuna, which, you know, I'm new to Madison, I'm still, still learning how this person is, just this great coach. But I want to let you know this little thing that he has started. We actually have state qualifying kids. We got little first graders, like doing amazing things right now. So I just wanted to share some good news with that. Like, we got kids go into districts, states, like it's, it's a pretty big thing, so I just want to let you guys know. So maybe coming together, working on some things, that would be great. I mean, as an individual myself, you've made that pretty clear, as an individual, yeah, that's great. So if we could like come up with some things to work with the community on, I don't care if it's a bake sale, I'll do whatever you want me to do, just to kind of help mend that relationship. Okay?
And Jess, I know that you're new to the community. Historically, Madison has had a very strong wrestling program for many, many, many years, and Mr. Fortuna has been involved for many, many, many years.
That's what I'm learning. I got a press guy coming down to Canfield, Ohio on the 27th, and he's going to do an interview with him and kind of get the word out, like, we're going to return some glory to Madison and bring back wrestling and make it really huge and go from there, so, trying. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any board members wishing to give a report tonight?
Hey, Sean? I emailed you about speaking tonight.
When did you do that? I didn't get an email, but-
I don't mind.
Go ahead.
My name is, excuse me, my name is William Sizemore, and I live at 7228 Lake Road here in Madison. I am here today to explain why masks should be optional on school buses. I prepared a paper and have copies for all of you up there to follow along as I read it out loud for the audience. Why it is unlawful to require mask wearing on a school bus. The CDC issued a mandate entitled "requirement for face masks on public transportation conveyances and at transportation hubs," CDC. On page nine of ED COVID-19 Handbook, Volume One, PDF, it states, quote, "As further described in the section below on transportation considerations, CDC issued an order requiring face masks, or, excuse me, requiring wearing masks on all public conveyances, including on school buses," unquote. Reasons why this is unlawful. Number one, as stated in ORC State Law 5501.1, Section 5501.1, Ohio Revised Code, Ohio Laws, quote, "Public transportation does not include school bus transportation," unquote. Number two, as stated in the United States Code, Federal Law Title 49, Section 5302, USC Title 49, Transportation, GovInfo.gov, "Public transportation," quote, "does not include school bus." Since the CDC mandate mentioned above is unlawful, forcing a student to wear a mask on a school bus would be coercion. Number one, according to ORC 2905.12A5, Section 2905.12, Ohio Revised Code, Ohio Laws, where there is, quote, "legal freedom of choice," unquote, a school bus is not public transportation. Therefore, there is legal freedom of choice to not wear a mask. No one can, quote, "take, withhold, or threaten to take or withhold official action," unquote. In summary, if you do not, if you do not want to have your child wear a mask on a school bus, they do not have to, and neither the school nor state has the illegal authority to enforce it. There is no acceptable reason to discriminate against anyone and force them to wear or not to wear a mask on a school bus. If any of you board members continue to refuse to take action or do anything contrary to allowing masking to be optional on the school buses, you would be guilty of unfairly dealing with the people on school buses, as well as doing a disservice to the residents of this community, at the very least. Got a quote here I want to read you. Quote says, "No single person, including the President of the United States, should ever be given the power to make a medical decision for potentially millions of Americans. Freedom over one's physical person is the most basic freedom of all, and people in a free society should be sovereign over their own bodies. When we give government the power to make medical decisions for us, we in essence accept that the state owns our bodies." That quote came from Dr. Ron Paul. Attention Madison School Board, even United States Senator and Doctor Ron Paul acknowledges the limitations of power of elected officials. Stop the overreaching of your positions and just do the job you are elected to do. Your jobs do not include making decisions for parents regarding face diapers and/or Fauci Ouchies. Let the parents do their job and make the decisions for their own children.
Thank you, Mr. Sizemore.
I urge all of you to do the right thing and actively allow masks to be optional and help the residents of this community with the freedom of equality and make yourselves an attribute and helpful resource for our residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Reports and recommendations of the Treasurer.
Thank you. I have one item to discuss, and that has to do with the motion for the receiving of school bus bids. Two weeks ago, we were notified by the state that we made it through four rounds of allocation for school bus purchase, and we will, could receive $45,000 per bus for up to four buses. That's the good news. The bad news is buses right now with inflation are going to cost right around $100,000, so that means we need to come up with $55,000 per bus in order to use their $45,000. So the issue we have in this district is we have a permanent improvement levy that generates $175,000 a year, so clearly in one year, we won't generate enough money to buy buses with it, let alone the fact that that levy is also used, and we used it for the four handicap buses that we got that were in great shape, that we were able to get for $10,000 apiece, and also building repairs. So we are trying to figure out, in whatever funds we have available, how to buy four buses this year. So good news is, we're going to get almost 45% of a bus funded by the state. The bad news is, I don't know where we're going to get the 55%. But before we even start that process, we need to put a bus out for bid. Certain things are required to be bid by the state of Ohio, any improvement to a building that's more than $50,000, or school buses, they're specifically included in the bidding procedure. We go through the Ohio School Council because they bid on behalf of about 160 member districts. It saves us the cost of advertising and the time of actually opening the bids, and when a manufacturer has the opportunity to sell buses to 160 school districts, multiple buses, which I think this, this is going to be the biggest year in a while because of the school, because of the school bus purchase through the state of Ohio, I think they sharpen their pencils a little more. You know, if you're going to sell 160 buses, 100 or 320 buses, you work a lot harder to get every penny out of that bid that, that you can, as opposed to Madison bidding on her own for four buses. We still get to control exactly what we, what we want. We get a list of, it's about 30 pages of options. We get what we usually get here in Madison. You'll see some of our buses don't look like other buses going down the road. We don't pay for tinted windows, we don't pay for blackened out windows, because unfortunately they, they cost more money, and we just can't afford to have those types of extras on our buses. But we bid buses that will last us 15 years, and that's what we're going to continue to do. So that's the reason this is on. We didn't participate in the bus bid in the fall because we knew we didn't have any money for buses. Here, I'm not sure we have it, but we're going to find enough to at least buy one bus and hopefully up to four.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
And it's okay if you have to go back and, you know, look at some of this stuff. Do you remember when we were at the Capitol Conference and I had texted you about the cell phone tower?
Yes.
And I know that you explored that a few years ago.
And I'm still exploring it.
Okay, so we are still?
I've had, I emailed three different area representatives. Two of them got back to me, and one missed the meeting that he set, and I think it was two weeks ago or three weeks ago, we met again. They're looking at just different properties in, in the district. I don't know where on those properties they would go. We're a ways away from that. The first thing they've got to do is look at the area that we're in, and I think three of our four buildings were in an area that they wanted. Then they will send us some type of lease just to look at, and then if we kind of say, okay, those terms are okay, they'll narrow down what land they want it on, where on that land they want it, and then that's going to be a conversation that, you know, Angela and I are going to have to have. We don't, obviously don't want to put it in the middle of a field that's being used. And then they will shop that lease out to carriers. And then we would sign a lease, but we're, I'm, I'm looking at it.
So obviously, this is not a quick process.
It is not.
It sounds like it's going to be a very long, okay. My second question is, you know, many years ago, we logged out that property behind the middle school. Do we have any other property that can be logged?
I don't know if we do. Angela, do you think we do?
I don't think we do.
And then lastly, I know we've held on, other than Bennett Road, do we have any other property not being used? Well, it's being used, but do we have any other property holdings besides Bennett Road?
The only property I know of is the one that has that baseball diamond on it that's rented to the community group.
Yeah, that's Bennett Road.
And do we, how do I put this? Do we want to ever at some point explore the sale of that property?
That would be a board decision.
Right, I'm, I'm kind of throwing it out there. Do we want to, I mean, if we're looking at, we need what, $200,000?
Yeah, this year, because I think this is going to occur again next year.
Now, do we, I thought this was over several years when I read it.
This is a one-year.
So we have to do it this year?
We have to have a quote to the state by June 30th, which these bids will make, and we have to pay for it by either June of 2023 or September of 2023, which is going to take that long to build a bus. A bus is an eight, nine, 10-month process.
So it wasn't this fiscal year, but next fiscal year?
Is when we're going to have to have it built by.
Okay.
Does it have to be a new bus?
Yes, and we can't lease buses. I looked into that, too.
And what, you mentioned what they were before and now, what was the price difference?
Well, right now, they're going to be about $100,000. We opened up bus bids a year ago, and they were $96,000, and we know what inflation's done since then.
I think some historical context, when I first started in central office, we could get three to four buses for the money we collected on that levy. So that's how much buses have gone up over the 16 years.
And we continue to collect the same amount on that levy that we did 16 years ago?
So it went from 96 to 100?
I'm going to guess it's going to be 100 this year. I'm hoping, I'm not guessing low, but, you know, we'll figure out what it is we have to do.
Seven percent, which that's close. There's got to be some leverage with other districts going against the suppliers, I would think.
Well, that's, the bids we received a year ago were, were part of the Ohio School Council bid.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have not bid, I don't believe I've ever bid individual buses just as the district here. It just doesn't make any sense. You know, you're, you're out minimum $300 or $400 just for the advertisement in the paper.
Okay. Okay.
If there's no other questions, I'll get to the items in the agenda.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, the first is to approve the financial reports for all funds, fund-to-fund transfer report and the check payment register for January 2022.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0. The next is to accept a generous donation of gloves, mittens, leggings, underwear, and hats from Park United Methodist Church to North Elementary School to be used as needed, a generous donation of tea from Madtown Nutrition to North Elementary School for staff appreciation, and a generous donation of gift cards from 528 Tavern to North Elementary School to be used for streak of the month.
I move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Thank you to everyone that donated. We really appreciate it. This community is very generous with our schools, so thank you.
Roll call.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0. And the final one is to allow the Ohio Schools Council cooperative advertising, receiving of bids for school bus chassis and bodies.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0. That's all I have this evening, thank you.
Reports of the administrative team?
Okay, if we could go to sit in the front, actually, the second row, you'll be able to see it a little bit better, but I have a presentation tonight on the graduation requirements. All right, well, the focus of tonight's presentation is on graduation requirements for this year's class and beyond. And Mrs. Grimes was a part of that discussion with the high school staff, as well as Mr. Brady, as the high school principal and the guidance counselors, because we've had a lot of things to talk about over the last couple of years, mostly pandemic-related. We did some revisions to the policy when the new requirements came out in 2020, but since then, we haven't really looked at them and what the next steps are, because we've been dealing with pandemic. But we're now coming out on the other side of that, which is a good thing, and it's time to talk about what we need to do to help kids be successful. So I'm just going to go to the next screen, and we'll go, and then it'll catch up here, right? All right, so the current requirements for the class of 2022 are 24 credits for graduation, four in each core subject area, eight credits of electives, and there are state testing requirements as well, 18 points on the required state tests, remediation free score on ACT or SAT, that's an or, or an industry credential and workforce readiness seal. Most of our students graduate using the 18 points on state tests, some do it through the remediation free score, and then we have a group of students that, since the pandemic, have had a variety of pathways, and we do have another option. So, let me go back, wait a minute. It's kind of touchy. It's kind of touchy. So we have proposed changes for the class of 2022. We would like to lower the credit requirements from 24 to 21. And I want to give a little bit of background on that. In 2008, we upped the credit requirements. I think from that time, I think it was a 21 and we wanted to go to four in a core and move them up to the 24 credits. Since then, we have cut numerous staff because we haven't had the funds to maintain the number of foreign languages that we need to offer, the electives we need to offer, as well as those core requirements. So it's been in conversation and the pandemic sort of highlighted the need for our most at-risk students to be successful. That 21 credits is a bar. And I will share with you that we would be in line with other districts in the Lake and Jaga Counties plus Geneva. Over 50% of the districts are at 21 credits and some of those districts are high-performing districts. The state requirement is 20 credits. Yeah, this is still over the state requirement. The state requirement is 20 credits and it is one, it would be one over and we are well over right now. It would prove consistency for senior year move-ins because oftentimes, we'll get kids at their end of their junior year, their senior year, that come in and they need 24 credits to graduate, but we're at a school district that required 21. So we're setting those kids up for extra work and, you know, it's a fairness issue. Especially, we have become a more transient community and we do get many senior year move-ins and we always panic, how are we going to help these kids be successful? It would provide the differentiation for all students to succeed, especially in our special needs population. And Auburn students would have an easier time scheduling classes because with the four in the core, that fourth science is often very hard to get. We do require more in social studies just as a part of our electives and those types of things, but that fourth science always seems to be a stumbling block for our Auburn kids. So overall, the 24 to 21 credit reduction is to help those kids that struggle. I will tell you that those kids that succeed are going to get more than those 24 credits because they want all of those things for college. Then the other thing we would like to propose is to provide the option for the class of 2022 to use the 2023 graduation requirements. So what those are would be to earn the 21 credits if the board approves the change. That is the, you know, district requirements. Then they would have to demonstrate what is called competency and this is what the class of 23 and beyond would have to do. Passing score on Ohio's high school Algebra I and English II test or to demonstrate competency through one of three options. So you would have two career-focused activities, enlist in the military, or complete college coursework. Then you could, so that would be another option besides the mandatory scores and those scores are less than proficient. Yes, Jeff? I'm going to go through that in the slide. Yeah, because this is, this is condensing 56 pages from the ODE into a 20-minute presentation. But I do have some examples. And then you would demonstrate readiness. You have to earn two seals. One of them has to be a state seal. One of them could be a local or a state seal. Oops, I'm too fast on this thing with the click. Nothing. It's for the class of, all you would be approving. You're jumping ahead in my presentation. This year's class of 2022. Yep. Okay, so it's a passing score on Algebra I or the English II tests. So that score would minimally be 684 on each test. It is not proficient. They want to make sure that you know that. It's not the proficient score, but it's the passing score that the state has set. Then you demonstrate competency through one of three options. So the career-focused activities could be foundational, proficient scores on WebEx exams, a 12-point industry credential, which is very difficult to do. Our Auburn students don't even have that until after graduation often because they're taking those tests at the end of their senior year. A pre-apprenticeship or acceptance into an approved apprenticeship program. Now, going forward, class of 2023 and beyond, we have that opportunity. We will be able to do that for our students. We also are taking part in that pre-apprenticeship grant program, which is going to help develop some of those activities. And then the supporting pieces would be work-based learning, earn the required score on work keys, and earn the Ohio Means Job Readiness Seal. That also would meet one of the state seal requirements. Sure, yep. Yes, thank you. Thank you. I couldn't remember the name of the company, but. And for this year, in all honesty, what we're looking at is that 684 on the Algebra I and the English II. We aren't, we aren't delving into some of these more in-depth things. That's for the class of 23 and beyond. So you could also demonstrate competency if you enlist in the military or you complete college coursework through our CCP program. Then you have to show readiness. So what's the easiest way to show readiness? Earn two seals. There are, and I'm going to go through each of these seals, so I'm not going to read them right now, multiple state seals that students can earn and one local seal. So they would have to earn one state seal this year and one local seal if we use that So for the state seals, there's a citizenship seal and that is also based on testing because they still want these kids to, we're still going to require students to take the state tests in history and government because at a future date, once I understand it, I'll be coming to you with the new report card and how that's all going to roll out. But I don't understand that yet because I've been working on graduation and that's the fall. But the citizenship seal is earn a score proficient or higher on the American History and Government exams and our students typically do very well on those exams. We have between a 75 and 80% passing rate overall the first time those kids take the test. We get it higher after that. So very many, many of our students will earn that citizenship seal without a problem. They could earn a B or higher in the appropriate College Credit Plus courses. They can earn equivalent score to be proficient on an AP test. They could earn a final course grade that is equivalent to a B or higher in both American History and Government. And then earn a score to be determined on the social studies alternative assessments for the student with the most significant cognitive disabilities. So that would also help those students earn a state seal because these graduation requirements are for all students. Science seal is very similar to the history or the citizenship seal, only they have one test they have to take, a score of proficient or higher on the state biology exam, a B or higher in the appropriate CCP course, earn a score equivalent to proficient on an AP test, and then a score to be determined on the science alternative assessment for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. Or they can earn a final course grade that is equivalent to a B or higher in an advanced science course. So chemistry, physics, other physical sciences, our advanced biology or other life sciences, physical geology or earth-space science. And if we had any AP courses, which we do have one, we have AP Bio, right? At the high school. The Ohio Means Jobs Readiness Seal. This is actually where a lot of our Auburn students will be able to earn this seal. And as a part of this proposal, you will be adopting a resolution that will allow our students to attend Auburn to earn seals through Auburn as well as our high school. So it would take, to demonstrate certain professional skills required for success in the workplace, students must work with at least three experienced and trusted mentors who validate the demonstration of these skills in schoolwork or the community. Students will earn that seal by satisfying proficiency in each of the 15 identified skill areas. Use the Ohio Means Jobs Readiness Seal Form to record demonstration of each professional skill and work with a manner to validate that they have received minimum of two or three environments in schoolwork and community for each of those skills. And then there's the industry-recognized credential and these are really much harder to get. It's a qualification of a specific set of competencies related to an industry or occupation. These credentials can take many different forms, including certificates, certifications, and licenses. And to earn it, the student needs to have a 12-point industry-recognized credential or earn a group of credentials totaling 12 points in a single career field. And again, Auburn would be the place students could earn that seal. Show readiness, state seals continue to find. We have the college ready seal and then those are the scores for the ACT test. And again, they're the same scores I think we're dealing with now that our students can use that pathway. English sub-score of 18 or higher, reading sub-score of 22 or higher, mathematics sub-score of 22 or higher. Not many of our students take the SAT because the ACT is more widely accepted, but English Language Arts score of 480 or higher, mathematics score of 530 or higher. And then the Military Enlistment Seal is if a student actively is accepted into the military. And to do that, they have to take a test to get into the military. So there's still that testing component. So, and then that could also be in the competency pathway if they enlist in the military and they get that seal. And then there is the Technology Seal. And that is, and we don't have any of those courses at our high school, an Advanced Placement or IB test, but we have students who could take a technology course through Lakeland and earn a B or higher. And they could complete a technology course that meets the criteria established by the ODE and we will have to audit our tech courses to see if that meets the criteria. That would be the next step for us. Auburn, though, has told me that all of their programs will offer this Technology Seal. So we have about 40 to 50 students attend Auburn every year. So Auburn helping do some of the work with these seals is going to be huge. And then we have the Honors Diploma Seal. And the Honors Diploma used to be one straight thing to track. Our counselors are now going to have to track six different Honors Diplomas. Academic Honors Diploma, C Career Technical Honors Diploma, and International Baccalaureate Honors Diploma. We won't be doing that one because we don't have that program. STEM Honors Diploma, Arts Honors Diploma, Civics and Social Sciences Honors Diploma. And they are defined in great length in the Ohio Graduation Requirements Guidebook on ODE. And this one, we won't be able to offer either because we don't have enough foreign language, but it's the Seal of Biliteracy. So students could earn the Seal of Biliteracy by demonstrating they're eligible for a high school diploma, demonstrate English Language Arts proficiency, and demonstrate world language proficiency. And since we do not have that test to do that, that is not right now something we're going to be able to offer our students. And then we have three local seal options. Community Service Seal. So students will complete a community service project aligned with the guidelines adopted by the board. And for the class of 2022, it would require 10 hours of community service because, let's face it, during the pandemic, even our own key club kids couldn't get a whole lot of community service in. So we have to take those things into consideration. For class of 2023, require 20 hours of community service and for 24 and beyond, 40 hours of community service, which would ultimately get those kids on a 10-hour-a-year track if they so choose to do it that way, to monitor. Then there's the Student Engagement Seal and these are for the kids that get involved in school. Participate in extracurricular activities such as athletics clubs, student government to a meaningful extent as determined by the guidelines that we will adopt. And then students must successfully participate in a board-approved school sport, school-sponsored club, and our community-sponsored club for the equivalent of three activities. Students must submit an extracurricular activity completion form signed by the program advisor and then the administration at the high school would approve the seal. And then Fine and Performing Arts. And this one can take on multiple ways of looking at it through the school lens. It would be, a student must complete a minimum of three high school credits in the area of fine arts with a C or higher. Option two, participate and demonstrate skill in a board-approved drama production for the equivalent of four activities in grades nine through 12 while enrolled in Madison Local Schools. And then do an extracurricular activity completion form signed by the program advisor and a building administrator. So for example, you also could have students that do outside dance and are really active in dance through Rabbit Run or active in programs through Rabbit Run. So we're going to have to have conversations about what that would look like for documentation. But I do believe that that would fit part of that seal. And then, like I said, Auburn will offer five seals, the industry-recognized credential, the technology seal, the career technical honors diploma seal, Ohio Means Job Readiness Seal, and the Student Engagement Seal using Auburn's criteria for the seal because they have work-based clubs and ways to get involved. And so when I bring this whole thing forward in March, there will be a motion adopting Auburn, giving Auburn permission to offer those seals for our kids. So what are the next steps to adopt the changes to the board policy March 1st? And those board policy changes are outlined in a draft I gave you, but basically changing the credits and telling, allowing the class of 2022 to use the class of 23 and beyond graduation requirements. We would then meet with the students who would benefit from the changing requirements and we need to develop some materials to share with parents and students for beyond, for this year and beyond, and so that they have some ideas. Now, another piece that I do want to share is with two guidance counselors, kids may say, I want every seal there is. We're going to do two seals. Now, I know the kids in the honors program really want that honors seal. It's always something they're proud of. That would probably be one of their seals. And they will probably meet the testing requirements. So they're done. We're going to have to have conversation about how many seals after we get through tracking them and figuring them out. Right, Mr. Brady? I mean, it's a lot of work to keep track of all these different seals. Infinite Campus will help us some, but, you know, on a good day, keeping track of where all these kids are, it's a lot of work for our counselors. So I do have a couple other things quickly and maybe Jen can talk about it a little bit, too, but Project Unify happened on Friday and that was just such an awesome morning. The kids, our special needs students competed in a basketball game. Our two seniors in our MH program got recognized like they would for a senior night and their parents walked them across the gym floor and it was just such a powerful morning. The kids had a great time. The student body was just absolutely wonderful and it's one of my favorite days of the year and it finally made school feel like normal again. Do you have anything to add this evening? And then the one other little thing is our And then the one other little thing is our preschool kids were out snowshoeing today. So that, you know, before all melts, they were out snowshoeing. So snowshoeing is a big thing here in Madison this past month, because at the middle school, they did it, I think, last week or the week before, and now they're at pre-k. All right, if you're ready for my recommendations, I will go through those.
We are.
All right. Under the personnel motion this evening, we are asking you to enter into the following employment contracts. To employ Danine Maebe, Central Registration EMIS Assistant, effective February 8, 2022, at an hourly rate of $17 an hour. To employ Donna Zulwhisky, under a one-year limited contract as an educational assistant cafeteria at Madison Middle School, effective February 14, 2022. And each of the following substitute teachers is approved by the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve and/or the Madison Local School District Superintendent, Christina Lewis and Hatell Patel. And that is the personnel motion this morning.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Vote is five zero.
And then we're asking you to reappoint Laura Hopkins as Madison Joint Recreation District Board Member representing the Madison Local Schools, effective January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2024.
I'll move.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Vote is five zero.
And with cases declining significantly, it is time to amend the Return to Learn Plan to allow for optional masking for staff members, effective tomorrow, Wednesday, February 16, 2022.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Vote is five zero.
And we have a second reading, which is the, so it would be your approval tonight on 5330, Use of Medication. And that is to allow parents to send a note in for over-the-counter medication.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Vote is five zero.
And then there is a first reading on 5460, the graduation requirements, which would reflect the changes we talked about this evening.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Vote is five zero.
And we have the proposed 2022-23 calendar and the 2023-24 school calendars. That has to be out for 30 days minimally for public comment. We will do our final approval on these calendars April 5. They will be posted on the website, and if people have questions or comments, they can email me.
I'll move.
There's really no movement. We just have to, do you have any questions about them, though? We will fill in parent conference dates in the next week or so. I know we talked about administratively, some of the conferences' second semester were a little early, so maybe bumping them back a little bit.
So we've tried to keep spring break, is that right, the last week of March typically?
Yep. I have said it's the la, as long as I'm here, it's the last week in March. So it is the last week in March, so that gives consistency, because Easter moves around. But the state testing windows do not move around, and that's the other thing we take into consideration, are the fall testing windows, starting early enough that it allows those students enough time in class when you have to test them at semester, and then allowing enough time in the spring. And actually, there's more tests in the spring, so that allows for the semester to be a little bit longer. So I think they balance out pretty nicely.
That seems to be the number-one question we get, is when is spring break so families can plan vacations? So it's typically the last week of March, and that's been, I don't know, at least five or six years we've been consistent with that.
And in 2023.
Is it the last week of March this year?
Yes, last full week of March.
Full week, yeah.
Full week. So if April is in that, it's not spring break. The spring break in 2023-24 actually falls over the Easter holiday, and we do give Good Friday, Easter Monday as part of our calendar. So that spring break actually starts March 22 in 2023 and goes to, oh, no, 24, and goes to April 1. So it's a little bit longer break. But Christmas that year was a little bit shorter, so it all works out. And then on the consent calendar tonight, we only have one motion, and it's to enter into an agreement with the Lake Jaga Educational Assistance Foundation, LEAF, for the 2022-23 school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, this is a group that helps high school seniors in financial aid planning. It'll help families complete that financial aid form, which is, you know, oftentimes intimidating, and help plan for post-secondary education.
Roll call.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Vote is five zero.
So we do not have a need for executive session, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Brian Horvath?
Yes.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Vote is five zero.
We now stand at recess.